I have two issues. One, I've already addressed on streetlights, so that's taken care of, thanks to one of your city employees. The other one is, my name is David Price, I'm IFFOC, Independent Federal Fund Oversight Committee. On August 30th, I had written a letter to your city attorney due to recent complaints from the Highcrest NIA, and specifically tailored to the NIA problems with the federal block grants. I also request that your city attorney do a complete audit of any and all funds and expenses in which was designated for the Highcrest NIA for the last five years. I was asking for a complete detailed list of expenses, plus payouts, basically what went into our neighborhood and what went out. Your legal counsel advised me she didn't believe an investigation was warranted. I strongly object. I really don't care what she believes. She did not address my issues you have before you. My issues were clearly shown unaccountability in this specific area. Let me explain some of the things. The NIA for the Highcrest was told that their grants were used for Fremont Street project. My question was, if we're paying city taxes, water runoff tax, why do we have to use block grants to pay city projects when they already have funding for this? Curve tax, runoff, water runoff tax, et cetera. Second of all, they told the NIA they weren't a 501(c)(3) legally. They were never a 501(c)(3), and they had to do that this year, and register to be a 501(c)(3). If that was the case, then the city committed fraud by you getting block grants for their NIAs, and they weren't legally a 501(c)(3). That was the city's responsibility if they were drawing federal funds as a 501(c)(3) and then told the NIAs, "You're not legally a 501(c)(3)". So how did you get those funds? Secondly, the NIA, several NIAs that I contacted wanted a detailed list of expenses. What went in, what was paid out, so they could see what was going back and forth. They can't get it. That's why I asked for an audit, so we can get those things for your NIAs. We need transparency from the NIAs to the block grants to the city. We can't seem to get it, even when we requested specifically for your attorney to do an audit to figure out what went in, what went out. Why can't that be possible? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price. I know the staff will be aware of this and be mindful of your comments. Rose Welch, to be followed by Brian Moore.
Hey, y'all. So last week after the city council meeting, I found myself engaged in a conversation with a number of people, including Mayor-elect Michelle De La Aila. I mentioned that there's this, like, really false idea that we should treat police forces with, like, a special reverence, because their jobs are so dangerous, and, you know, everyone nodded. And I said, "But they're not." Michelle said, "But they are, which is, you know, pretty common." Misconception, although I was a little shocked that, you know, maybe some of our city leaders weren't aware of the actual statistics involved with workplace injuries and fatalities in the United States, and of course, in Kansas and in Topeka, et cetera. See, it's not actually very dangerous to be a police officer. According to the Department of Labor Statistics and the Centers for Disease Control, which are the agencies that track workplace injuries and fatalities in the United States of America, the most dangerous jobs are as follows: loggers, aircraft pilots, extraction workers, including coal miners, iron and steel workers, garbage collectors, farmers, ranchers, drivers, including ambulance and delivery, such as UPS, FedEx, et cetera, fishing workers. They're in a lot of danger, surprisingly. Construction workers, bartenders, and then, police forces. I've collated some of the above. For reference, police forces come in at about 16, and I'll tell you, after number three, there's, like, a really steep, like, drop-off there. So let's think about this. I partined for years through college, and I'd like some special reverence, that'd be, that'd be pretty cool. While we're at it, let's consider this fun fact. Once a cell phone line repairman dies each month at work, it is our national monthly blood sacrifice to the gods of unlimited cellphone data. Where's their special reverence? So anyway, while it is a certainty that police forcing is dangerous for the citizenry, including the one-in-three black men that we put in prison each year, I'm very skeptical of the myth that police forcing is dangerous for the police forces. This just isn't factually true. All my life, I've heard that police are special and that their excesses are excusable because they're willing to die for us. We hear endless propaganda that they just want to make it home every night, implying that they're really, like, in legitimate danger every night, just pretty gross propaganda. We hear endless bids for undeserved sympathy. The police claim that they're willing to die for us, but it's a fact that they were unwilling to die for Dominique White. He was fleeing from those nameless, faceless, protected police forces, and even if he had reached for a weapon as he was running away, it's so unlikely that he could have reached for it, drawn it, cocked it, aimed it, and actually hit a cop while running, y'all, at that distance? Much less actually hit them, much less actually killed them. And it doesn't even matter, because they didn't even wait to see. They shot Dominique because he defied them in a bid for his life. They murdered Dominique not because their lives were in danger, but because their egos were in danger. The facts are clear. Police are not willing to die for us, and they are not in special danger. And now that I've made you aware of these facts, I'm calling upon you to keep them in mind in regards to all future actions and choices. We have a police contract upcoming next year, and the name provision, it needs to go. We're asking you guys to call in the DOJ COPS program to come in, and they can help retrain our police officers to become community-oriented rather than ego-oriented. Next week and next month, when you hear our community come forward to speak about police forces, remember that the people who are speaking to you are in danger, but the police officers they're telling you about, they're not in danger. Remember these facts, please. Thank you. Oh, and before I sit down, I think we'd all like to know who we can depend on joining us tomorrow. Councilman Clear last week, and Councilman Ortiz informed the public that Ripley Park is in your district, so we'd really love to especially have you there. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clear.
Number one, I'm Councilman Clear, and it's not in my district. We've already talked about that. And I really resent, can you stand up? I resent the fact that you want me to sit here and respect what you're saying about your loved one being killed, when I've had police officers that I love that was killed in the line of duty. So don't-
Okay, listen, listen.
It doesn't matter.
We respect someone speaking.
We're not talking about bartenders. So the ridiculous, I mean, you want me to sit here and respect you, but you don't have any respect for what I have been through, or what some police officers have been through, and it's ridiculous.
Okay, that's, no. This is not a point, and in public comment, you have the opportunity to address the council, and it isn't a time for question and answer for debate. Next is Brian Moore, to be followed by Christina Valdivia-Alcla.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Baer, that's what I go by. I'm here today to actually speak about the Department of Justice's Community-Oriented Policing Services, also known as the COPS program. I know that some other community members have spoken about this before. I also feel as if you either chose not to listen, or just confused by the newest programs the DOJ puts forward addressing issues in policing. I'd like to declare my own personal experience. I've been a ranking security officer at multiple native casinos and multiple properties around the nation for pretty much the last decade. In my work, I don't carry weapons, no guns, no pepper spray, no taser, no billy club. I'm under surveillance at all times, audio and visual, and I have multiple policing procedures limiting my interactions with the public to make them feel welcome at all times. In my work, I deal with all the delightful parts of our society, people with active warrants, assheds, prostitutes, all of them. And through my work, I'm able to take care of millions and millions of dollars that are in play and at stake on the floor, all which is already on my hip. I've had guns put in my face, and I've been able to do this without injuring a single person in over a decade with, as I say, absolutely no weapon, and only radio on my hip. And if I can do that, and I feel that a particular police force can do that in a public park, it's really just about priorities. You have to make the priority of people you are overseeing and their well-being a priority, and not your ego. The Community-Oriented Police Services Program is part of the Office of the Department of Justice, and unsurprisingly, advances the practices of community policing in our country. They begin by coming into a city and learning everything about it, their history, their racial makeup, the crime issues, their community issues. They go and talk to beat officers, they talk to business owners, they talk to felons, they talk to everyone. They even talk to the elected leadership, so they talk to you. Once they have sensed the individual problems and needs of a community, they commit to building trust and mutual respect between the police and the communities. The COPS program is designed to address the issues which prevent policing communities from collaborating together to address crime challenges. They also award grants to hire community policing professionals and to provide training and technical assistance, things like that. They're there to help. However, they study it, they fix it, then they pay for it, and it's a damn good deal, just telling you. What they don't do is come to communities and facilitate meetings. That's a completely different program, known as Community Relations Service, and people from every side of the aisle complain about CRS involvement. They came into San Francisco, when they had the, they appeared at the scene of the death of Trayvon Martin. They came into Ferguson, Missouri, they appeared at the death of Michael Brown. We see how well they helped the community relations in those situations, which is not a lot. In Ferguson, they didn't calm down afterwards. COPS program stepped in after that to assess the situation and point out the police and city leadership what was obvious to the rest of us. The Ferguson had even, Ferguson has this consistent leadership, as we do. Ah, thank you. Now, I've been up there before. Poor relationship between law enforcement and the community, as we do. Reactive police response that failed to mitigate the issues that arose, as we do. Inadequate communication and information sharing, as we do. The list goes on and on and on. Community Relations Service is not here to help, and we are not going to allow you to attempt to arrest the dialogue from the community. In light of that, we invite you to a second part of our community meeting series, which is being learned by our community, for our community. We hope that you continue to join us in good faith. With the death of Dominique White, we can no longer pass the buck. So please stop playing power games, trying to confuse the community and think there are two different Department of Justice programs. They're the same, they're not the same, what is very, very different. Please let us have control of the situation. In a situation where in reality you are the students, accept that we need to learn and change and grow and progress together, and invite the COPS program to come help us. After all, this has been kind of mishandled so far. Step back and let the real cops step in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Christina Valdivia-Alcla, followed by Yasmary Rodriguez.
My name is Christina Valdivia-Alcla, and I'm here today to speak about continuing education. Teachers, real estate agents, personal trainers, accountants, doctors, all of these are among the many community members required to obtain ongoing education in order to maintain their roles in our community. "You are more likely to get better treatment when physicians receive continuing training in the latest trends," said Anita Stennis for the State Medical Association. "In addition to keeping abreast of emergent issues and practices, professionals gain a better understanding of their responsibilities to the community." The number of community continuing education instructions varies by discipline. For example, teachers generally complete 30 hours in their first four years. Real estate brokers and even salespersons have to complete 12 hours every two years. Physicians must document 50 hours every two years. Now, to all of you council members sitting here, you that campaigned for the job and with the vast responsibility that you hold, continuing education should be, without question, required for you to hold your seat. A proactive stance, rather than a passive stance, waiting until the worst happens. Well, it has happened. Dominique is gone, and all you have been is reactive. You have the legal and the moral responsibility to watch what is going on in the world, not just in Topeka, but all over the country, to anticipate trends, to update our community based on those trends, and to keep us safe. That's what leaders do. You are not in your seats because you raised the most money during your election, or because of the benefits and perks, like the $10,000 per year increase many of you gave yourselves. You have been elected to serve the people, and even more, to be the voice of the disenfranchised. At a national and state and local level, life is getting much harder for average folk, and increasingly violent and vicious. Police violence has been a blatant reality for a decade now. If you haven't seen how that could apply to Topeka, then perhaps you should step down. If you needed to see Dominique White die before you bothered to address it, each and every one of you should consider stepping down, if nothing else, for the sake of the people. Because your actions, well, let me just back up here. If your primary concern right now, at this moment in time, is how to weather these protests instead of how to continue your education and use that education to improve our community so that this never happens again, then step down. Because your actions and lack thereof have spoken volumes. And those of you who defiantly stay on as our elected leaders, do us a real service, and serve us. A city council is not for the weak, the idle, or the profiteering. A city council seat is not for those whose egos are bigger than their love for our community. This is a job for those who are invested in continuing education and continually improving safety and happiness of our community. You had a responsibility, and you dropped the ball. So from this point on, stop the politicking and try to save, and try to stop saving yourselves at the expense of others, at the expense of justice for Dominique's family, for citizens who will live in fear and mistrust of the law enforcement unless changes are made and real transparency is embraced. And I leave with a question, I'm almost done. There is an old saying, "That power corrupts." Have you become corrupted? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yasmary Rodriguez, to be followed by Marty Hilliard.
Good evening, my name is Yasmary Rodriguez. I'm still here bearing witness to the life of Dominique White and that of his grieving family. I think it's important to remember why we're here, and that's because of his life that was lost. And I think it's also important to remember that it's been almost 100 days since his death, and still really no answers in the city. I think it's also too important to note that one of your council members got really upset and emotional about lives that were lost in her own life. And I think it's important to remember that Dominique's family is still grieving a family member that was lost. But I'm here today to speak about transparency. In the last month, city council members have, our citizens have come for city council members to speak on topics that directly affect our community. This is a normal action that is required for the healthy democracy, and this normal, necessary action has apparently terrified our city council members, who would love nothing more than to sweep this underneath the rug and to move back behind those doors to conduct their city business. As examples of this, over this Sari business, over the past two weeks, we've had numerous and multiple council members and other elected officials reach out to us separately, as well as multiple members of this body have reached out to a number of local religious leaders privately to plan meetings of this various different reasons. And this is going to stop. Open Meetings Acts exists all over this country specifically to combat this community-damaging behavior. And Yasri, realize that you are very, very careful to just barely not break open Kansas meetings laws, with all of your closed-door meeting, private meetings, but you are most certainly breaking the spirit of those laws into a million little pieces. You do not get to play mommy and daddy against one another to get yourself out of trouble or to get what you want. Our entire community elected you, not just the ones who pulled tense and power. Your entire community pays you, not just the ones who donated to your campaigns. You're responsible to the community as a whole, as a whole body. And it is the height of immorality to sit in a community seat and attempt to treat only what the individuals that you see as powerful. Every member of our community is powerful, and we will stay organized until you understand this truth. No more closed-behind-doors BS. You are employed by us, you are accountable to us, your entire purpose is to represent our interests. And all of that begins with you dealing with us as an entire whole. Get out there, start knocking on doors, hold county hall meetings in your districts, and actually start talking to your people, the ones that elected you. And then do whatever it is that they want you to do. Stop thinking that you sitting in those seats gives you power. The only power that you have is what we allow. And we will only allow it as long as you represent our interest in that of the life and of the family of Dominique White. You cannot even understand our interests without living with the family and community as a whole, much less begin to fulfill those needs and desires. We hired you to work for us, and you need to take this holiday break to consider these truths. We expect you to come back January 1, ready to publicly listen to the people, to publicly work for the people, and also publicly be accountable to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Hilliard, to be followed by Sarah Oglesby-Donigan.
A wise man once said, "If you stick a knife nine inches into my back and pull it out three inches, that is not progress." Even if you pull it all the way out, that is not progress. Progress is healing the wound, and America hasn't even begun to pull out the knife. I'm here today to talk, I'm here today to ask you how you intend to define our community progress. In a recent Topeka Capital Journal report, we see proof that our police forces have made a practice of lying to citizens, assaulting citizens, making unlawful arrests, lying in court to get those same citizens convicted of crimes they did not commit, all to cover our police assaulting our citizens. Each of those acts was a knife in the back of our community, and each act of hiding is another knife in our back. Jason Judd shot two citizens while drunk one night along with three other officers. None of those officers were charged. That's another knife in our back. Jason Judd is Detective Judd now, and is the named officer presiding over the death of Dominique White. That's another knife in our back. The Lamas Brothers were 19 and 24. What have their lives been like since, since we shattered their trust in our community? What of their neighbors? There's another knife in our back that we can still see and feel. And every time we see you trying to hide the wounds that have been, there's another knife in our back. You refuse to release the names of any officers who hurt our community, and there's another knife in our back. And let's be clear, it's good to have the documentation that the Capital Journal has worked to provide, but we didn't need it to know what was going on. We can feel each and every knife in our back. Interim Chief Cochran was reported in the media saying unacceptable behavior is not tolerated going forward. And that's, I think, our main stance that we want to make known to the public and everybody. What about all those knives that are still there? This moment cannot be reduced and isolated and held in a vacuum until we go away, or until the White family goes away. That's not how the responsibility of office works, and regardless of what the body cam footage may show, we have a long history of damage. We have dozens of wounds waiting to be addressed, so now we need to know how you are going to move forward. As a body of leadership, is your goal to improve and grow? Is your goal healing? Is it progress? Or is your goal for us to return to the status quo as quickly as possible? This can't happen. So we need to decide how you're going to address each of these issues that have occurred over the last decade, each of which has resulted in a knife in the back of the community. You need to decide how you're going to remove those knives, how you're going to heal the wounds made by those knives, and how you're going to ensure that those knives are put away forever. We're giving you this chance to decide how our community is going to progress, because we elected you, and you deserve the first chance at this. So you can decide, or continue to let it be decided for you. I really hope to see some of you tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Oglesby-Donigan, to be followed by Oshara Hayes.
Hello again, I am Reverend Sarah Oglesby-Donigan, and today I am sharing a couple of articles that I invite you to read and consider. The links are in your emails. If for some reason you didn't get that, I will check with somebody else in your group. The first is from the Kansas City Star, and I quote, "Even though the Kansas Attorney General collects data from almost every law enforcement agency in the state, his office does not analyze the reports and no longer investigates complaints. The reports posted on the Attorney General's website do not offer any narrative data or complaints, nor do they list the names of officers involved or the residents who complained. So many things in Kansas government are not data-based, and they become transparency issues." That's what the article says. It also goes on to say that the message that people get when they see that there's almost no likelihood that their complaint will be sustained, that this is not a process that works, that law enforcement is not concerned with protecting them from racial profiling, and it's a waste of their time and effort to go through the process. Some of you sitting here today have expressed surprise that members of our community do not feel that our system of policing is fair and unbiased, and do not feel that their experiences are being looked at to see where we need to make changes. From here forward, I hope that you can no longer be surprised. Racial profiling, racially, racial bias in policing, these are real and have real impact on our communities. I now want to share with you a little snippet from another article I sent to you that I found talks about the long road to change that the city of Cincinnati took. It started with their police department understanding the need for a deeper relationship with the communities they served, one that can't be developed just by hiring a dedicated community policing officer, or offering the public the chance to have coffee with a cop. Former Cincinnati Police Chief Tom Striker, who served from 1999 to 2011 through some very, very hard times in that police department, says that "We thought we had a great relationship with the majority of our communities, but the reality was that we found out we had superficial relationships." The article continues, "But the lessons of Cincinnati are complicated. Successes require not just the adoption of a new method of policing, but also sustained pressure from federal officials, active support by the mayor, and participation of local communities." The changes we need to be looking at aren't as simple as posting our policy manual online, although we're glad it's there. In Cincinnati, they found that some of the changes were small. The police department vowed to hold a press conference within 12 hours of any officer-involved shooting, and to provide information as well as camera footage from the event. It agreed to track officers who received an inordinate number of complaints or who violated policies and take disciplinary action if needed. It established a citizen complaint authority with investigative and subpoena powers over police. It adopted new use-of-force policies and changed guidelines in how to respond to a array of complex situations. These are the kind of changes we are asking you to learn more about and begin to bring to Topeka. Some of you seem perhaps scared to have community members at these council meetings ask you to talk about these issues. If this seems extreme to you, then we're really doing something wrong in Topeka. Asking my elected officials to devote time and energy to a complex and damaging set of issues is what citizens should do, and your role as leaders should include being able to listen to people's anger, their sorrow, their struggles, and figure out what tools and resources are needed to address these. Finally, Cincinnati adopted a new strategy to police, and it's something we've been talking a little bit about, it's called Community Problem-Oriented Policing, or CPoP. The strategy requires them to do fewer out-and-out arrests.
Now, you have to-
And focuses on, yes, I'm finishing. And focuses on the problems that cause people to commit crimes in the first place. So I hope that you will take all of these ideas into consideration and commit to really educating yourselves, starting with a couple of articles I sent you in the books I left you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Oshara Hayes. I'm sorry, Oshara.
Ms. Oshara Hayes.
Thank you.
My name is Oshara, and I'm here today to speak about accountability. As a society, we have agreed on a set of community standards about the basics of right and wrong. We don't always agree on the details, but we do agree on the most basic tenets of right and wrong, which are honesty and ownership. I'm a mother. As a mother, I know that this is the first thing that we teach our children, and the loudest. When they make messes, when they make mistakes that hurt other people, when they break rules, we teach them to come to us and tell us to be honest, to own the truth. When they hide their messes, when they pass blame for their mistakes, when they pretend they didn't break the rules, we teach them that the longer they hide and pretend they're not at fault, the worse the damage they cause, and the worse the punishment. This lesson stays true for adults as well, and perhaps even more then, for our children. As example, the Chicago Police Department has spent the last decade enveloped in notoriety and tied up on ongoing cases related to years of leadership by Commander Purge, who involved Chicago police in over a decade of abuses at a secret site where they tortured black men into false confessions. The city of Chicago fought these cases one by one, and these men only gained freedom as each case was educated, I mean adjudicated. Two years ago, they hired a new superintendent, and things changed. When Police Superintendent Johnson came on board in Chicago- When Police Superintendent Johnson came on, on board in Chicago, he said, "Since becoming superintendent from day one, I have always pledged that if we were wrong, we admit it, we fix it, and we move on." To ignore it is just to perpetuate the problem. He then proceeded to ask the Department of Justice to review their city, after which he accepted every recommendation and cut the police shootings by fifty percent the first year. Even though he personally had nothing to do with the Burge era abuses, he began accepting fault and stopped fighting citizens on the Burge abuse cases, and he helped create school curriculum to address this dark chapter in Chicago history. He did what we teach our children. He became, he came forward, he owned the mistakes that had been made, and he is doing his damage to make whole the victims, which were not only the men tortured and imprisoned or already murdered, as Dominique White was murdered, but the community itself and its working. The city of Chicago is beginning to trust their police again, to become a community again. We need you to learn from the example of Police Superintendent Johnson and the city of Chicago. We need you to remember the lessons that our parents taught us that teach our children. We need you to admit the mistakes of your office, even if they were not, even if they were your predecessors. Own them. Make the victims whole, which includes not just the White family, but our entire community. Only then can we begin to heal and move forward. And I just want to say that I hope that you all hear the words that we're saying, and I know you have titles, and I know that you're in, you know, that you have certain titles that you own, but please, look at this as an individual, as a person, and really feel what we're saying, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Council members, we have a Mr. Grist, I don't have his first name, asked to address the council tonight. He was not aware of having to sign up in advance. If you wish to hear him, I think we have a motion to allow him. We would be changing, you know, doing our rules and allowing him to address. Deputy Mayor Cohen moves. Councilwoman Hiller seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes.
Question passes. We have eight yes with Mr. Emerson voting no.
Okay, eight having voted yes. Mr. Grist, if you would come to the podium and, you know, the rights there that you have four minutes to speak.
Thank you for letting me speak. After listening to what I just listened to, I feel mine's pretty petty, but I wanted to bring it to the attention, I have a job, I demo houses for the city of Topeka and do demo for individuals in buildings. I have a job at 1465 Washington. The last Wednesday, I demoed a house through the week. Wednesday, it was all on the ground in piles. I came down to the job to check on things and discovered a group of city employees, or whatever you call it, the inmates, on the job site, picking through the piles, pulling out metal, loading it in a city vehicle. It kind of disturbed me because I was at awe. You know, I have to fight every job I go to with people coming in and stealing and taking things without permission. I mean, it's the point I even haul my equipment home because I've lost batteries, Tony can do this. I'm even hauling it home every night to keep it protected. And I was down that morning and run a guy out picking copper out. Hey, you know, I'm willing to help people. If you come and ask me and you're broke, I'm going to help you. I find myself giving away too much a lot. But this deal disturbed me because if they're only picking metal, I can understand if they're cleaning trash, but they're picking metal and loading it, it's a petty thing. But where does that funds go to if they're selling that metal? I mean, if it was a mistake, hey, fine, but I'd like to know where those funds go to. And I've kind of got the runaround because it's always pointed back to code, it's been pointed to the people in charge of the inmates, back and forth. Everybody's went back and forth of who's at fault for this. It's something I think it needs to be addressed. Could it put me in a liability issue? If one of them guys got hurt on that job, it's on me. And with me having to name the city as an insurer to get my licensing, it kind of puts me in a spot that the city needs to look at this. I don't know how that works if they go into other jobs cleaning, if they pick this up, if they're taking metal of value, fine, but where's them funds go to? What's it used for? And if they came and asked me, I'd probably say, hey, go ahead, I don't care. But the whole point is, you don't do it without we knowing what's going on. And, and the biggest thing was, I didn't even think to bring my camera up and record. It was just, because I was just at awe, you know, seeing this happen. And if they can tell me and tell you, hey, we're using the metal for city funds, or we're using the metal to help somebody, no problem. But I think it's something that needs to be addressed because where else has this happened? I mean, if you had a job and you drove up and seen people doing this, I mean, you've got to understand, this is not a good deal. You know, I deal with it day in and day out. You know, I've lost equipment, batteries, windows, you know, it's just the same old story, but this was just floored me to all end. But I just wanted to let you know about it, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Council Brian Cole did sign up to speak, and he asked if he would, could speak if Mr. Grist did speak, so he now has the right to speak before, to address the council.
Good morning, counsel. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
No, we're, we're in the evenings. You're used to another, did you say good morning?
I may have said, I'm used to the.
I know. You're across the street.
Good evening, yes. And thank you for allowing me to be here, Brian Cole, the Shawnee County Department of Corrections. I think everyone here knows that the Shawnee County Department of Corrections works in cooperation, a very good positive working relationship with the city of Topeka to contract our inmates and officer to allow them to go around and to pick up trash, abatements, clean up property to mow, and do other types of beautification within the city of Topeka. These crews also are those who help nonprofit organizations such as Winter Wonderland, Boys and Girls Club, Fiesta Mexicana, Y and R Ray, Sunflower Soccer Association, the Black, or the Kansas Black Expo, Sheltered Living, et cetera. And these crews serve two main purposes. One of them is to save taxpayer money. These jobs that the inmates do with the officers, they don't take away from any union jobs or any jobs away from the city, but they do work in, the last statistics that I found out, these, these inmates will work about seventeen thousand hours a year doing this, and if you were to hire somebody at minimum wage, the, the, these crews are labeled, are able to save the community about almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And then the skill, I've been with the Department of Corrections almost thirty years, and I'm very committed to helping those who are incarcerated finding meaningful employment. I've done studies, and studies have shown that these crews are evidence-based for success, that if the people who are in jail, that they find meaningful employment, they're seventy percent less likely to reoffend. On this day in question, and I totally agree with the person who spoke with me, that the inmates had no business and the officers had no business on that property. Number one, if I would have pulled up, I would have agreed with that at this, as this individual did say. Our crews are, are ran by and assigned by the city of Topeka, and the information that was given to me was they were assigned to an area at around Fifteenth and Washington, that when they got there, there was, they did not have the address, they got there, they saw that. They were picking out scrap metal, my understanding, I certainly will not debate that. When they're there to pick up stuff, if they, if part of it's the scrap metal, that's what they did. When the individual showed up, and rightfully so, was upset, wanting to know why people were there, the information that was reported to me was that when city code officers got there, said this was not the property, that the officer that was with them and the inmates apologized, and, and everything was put back. Our officer and the inmates don't have time, they don't just roam the city looking for areas to get scrap metal. What, if they pick up scrap metal for the city, what the city does, I don't know. But these inmates work tirelessly at this job, that I work tirelessly helping those who find themselves incarcerated, finding jobs, work on several boards with mental health, jump, and things like that. The questions that the individual brought up about where the money goes, that would be something that the city would have to decide. But I, what I can assure you is, is that the city, the RMA crews, if they were there, they had no business. I apologize on behalf of the Shawnee County Department of Corrections. I've worked closely with Monique and Sasha, they also agreed that it was a mistake. I can assure you that all the property was put back, nothing was taken, and I apologize. And I will be talking with our officers too, to make sure that they have consistency with making sure that they have the right properties and making sure that those things happen. So with that, I stand for any questions. I appreciate your support for this program. It is of tremendous value to all of us.
Are there questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Not so much a question for, not so much a question for Mr. Cole, but we did have sort of a scandal, an internal issue with some city employees that had taken some piping, as I recall, a few years ago, and it required an internal investigation on the part of the city, and, and we do have a policy about that. So, sounds like the issue of the act, the misunderstanding was more or less resolved, but if it's worth it to check and see if there's any recycling going on of salvaged materials, if there's been a, a routine of dropping them off in a certain place or selling them or something, it'd be good to check.
I'm sure the city would look into that. Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. That completes the public comment for this evening. The next item is the executive sessions, and if the city clerk would give us the parameters for the first session.
The motion would be that the governing body recess into executive session for a period of ten minutes to consult with the city's legal counsel regarding potential litigation related to tort claims, which requires privileged attorney-client communication. In order to aid the discussion, the following individuals should be present. Members of the governing body, City Manager Brent Trout, Deputy City Manager Doug Gerber, Associate City Attorney Nick Jefferson, and myself.
Okay, those are the parameters. Councilman Jensen moves to go into executive session. Deputy Cohen seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no.
Sorry. We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, we'll go into executive session when the room is clear.